Good evening and welcome to the Villa Park City Council Closed Session Meeting, 6:00 PM. Looks like we've got four out of five council members present. Steve, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Pitts?
Here.
Councilwoman Miles?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Here.
And Mayor Zimmerman is out this evening.
All right, closed session then.
We have one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated lit initiation litigation, Government Code Section 5495, 6.9D4, one case. And we can adjourn into closed session.
Okay, let's adjourn. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Will you please call the roll, Steve?
Here.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Here.
Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Rosini?
Here.
And Mayor Zimmerman is out with a family issue this evening.
We had a closed session prior to this meeting. Todd, are there any announcements or reports to be made from today's closed session?
No, no, Mayor, we did have item of initiation of potential litigation, but there's no reportable action at this time.
Okay. Given the circumstances involving this evening, there's going to be no invocation or dedication, but we do have the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask everybody to please rise, place your right hand over your heart. Councilman Callcut, would you please do us the honor?
Thank you. Please put your hands over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Please be seated. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting. We encourage your participa- or, excuse me, participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before, in this case, our city manager and/or staff at this time, and they can be found in the rear of the room outside of the, by the entrance there. Speakers will be called in individually, I should say, will be called in individually, this is a COVID terminology here, during the public comment section of the item. Everybody's now in the room thankfully. And speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers will also be able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. Steve, do we have any? Do we have any at this time? I know we have to do all of the presentations, announcements, and council reports.
We did receive one comment from Mr. Sergio Stone.
Okay.
So when the time comes, I can-
Okay, sounds great. Let's go ahead and start off with presentations, announcements, and council meeting reports. We have no Villa Park Distinguished Citizen at this time, but we do have a proclamation. And do we have the representative? Here?
No, I don't believe she's here.
Okay, all right, we'll circle back to that, or maybe next month. Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and city council members. Thank you for having me here. First of all, I want to talk about a secret message through City Manager Frank's about an incident that occurred here earlier in the month and a request to debrief it a little bit with the city council. So I'm going to do that first, then I'll get into the activity report for the month. So this actually occurred Friday, April 1st, at about 5:20 PM. At that time, the deputies from North Patrol Bureau, one of the deputies was covering City Villa Park because it's right about shift change. The Villa Park deputy wasn't actually in service yet. So initially, North Patrol deputies responded to the 19,000 Block of Mesa Drive, reference a report of a female going door-to-door selling items. The informant believed this female was possibly a victim of some type of labor trafficking and noticed some suspicious activity. The deputies arrived on scene, located a victim, female victim, then located a vehicle being driven by a female subject who is eventually determined to be a suspect in the incident. Additional North Patrol Bureau deputies arrived to assist as a second vehicle with an additional possible suspect arrived in the area. Through the course of the investigations, deputies requested the assistance from our North Narcotics Vice Detail, which investigates human and labor trafficking incidents. Three investigators, specially trained in human trafficking investigations, responded and arrived to assist with the investigation. During the course of this investigation, it was determined that the victims were being forced to work for a fraction of their earnings selling these magazines. So basically, they would, you know, if they sold $100, the suspects would keep, you know, $95 of it, and they would get $5 of it. It's kind of how these organizations work. The victims were forced to live in an unimproved garage without any plumbing. Their access to restrooms and showers was controlled by the suspects. Their phones were controlled by the suspects. Most of the victims' phones that they had actually belonged to the suspects, so they had no way to contact family members, really summon help or anything like that. The victims were not allowed to leave the residence unsupervised. If they needed something from the store or shopping, they were escorted to the location with the suspect where they could be monitored at all times. And at times, the victims were subject to emotional and/or physical abuse for violating rules established by the suspects. So it's a pretty precarious situation for these folks to be in. Through the course of this investigation, deputies at the end were able to locate the three victims, arrest two suspects who were part of a much larger labor trafficking ring. A search warrant was executed in Riverside County where additional possible suspects and victims were identified. At the location of the search warrant, numerous items of evidence related to an organized labor trafficking ring was seized from the location, and the investigation is ongoing. During the course of this incident, we had what, looking at three, four, five, six, seven deputies respond and really tied up a lot of resources here in this because we had multiple individuals to contact. So during that time, North Patrol has what we call a special enforcement team. It's a two-deputy team assigned to uniform patrol, and basically, they just respond to, you know, targeted areas where we're doing, you know, high levels of enforcement. So they slid over here and helped handle calls for service in Villa Park. And then just to close this up a little bit, I wanted to touch base on some information about the human trafficking, just to put it out there since we're on the subject. So we have, like I mentioned, a dedicated team. It's through our Special Investigations Bureau, North Narcotics and Vice Team, that handles all these human trafficking and vice investigations. So for 2021, some of their interesting statistics are as follows. So they made 20 human trafficking felony arrests. They conducted and made 14 internet prostitution misdemeanor arrests, 12 in-call or call-out prostitution misdemeanor arrests, not in Villa Park. This is, they handle this countywide. 21 street prostitution arrests, 27 massage parlor violation arrests, seven human trafficking vice-related search warrants were served, and they also investigated 17 illegal gaming houses, which a lot of those locations are kind of a nexus for this type of activity. So since I was asked to kind of debrief that, I wanted to give you a little information on that. It was a really, you know, fortunate event for us that the informant, the homeowner, just thought something wasn't right, you know, could see some people following these folks that were selling the magazines, just kind of got that, you know, spidey sense went up, something's not right here, and was, you know, nice enough to call us so we could get there and investigate it and really kind of help some people that are, you know, in a real time of need. So it worked out really well. So again, the saying, if you see something, say something. That's what this resulted in. So, okay, so any questions on that? Sir? Well, the, where it was being based out of, well, at the time, it was somewhere, they served some search warrants in Riverside County. I don't know the exact location on those. They're still investigating it, so that's all I have. So it seems like the base is out of county, at least for this particular one. Yeah. Okay. So on to the March 2022 report. One of the things I wanted to do is Sheriff Barnes came out with some messaging points for spring, and one of the topics that he covered is property crime, and I wanted to talk about that a little bit here. So in December 2021, the Public Policy Institute of California, data showed increases in property crimes in four of California's major cities, Los Angeles, San Diego, and San Francisco. They state increases are likely greater because of a lot of these thefts go unreported. Due to the relatively small amount of property crimes in Villa Park, it's hard for us to track increases or decreases because we're really talking sometimes an increase or decrease of one or two incidents. But overall, in the California region, that type of crime is up. From the Sheriff's Department perspective, we're committed to a proactive approach to addressing property theft and holding thieves accountable to the full extent of the law. Unfortunately, the full extent of the law is not sufficient, as there is minimal consequence for property crimes. The sheriff is advocating for a restoration of balance to the criminal justice system. And I want to add some of the things that the Sheriff's Department at the North Patrol Bureau and then Villa Park, what we do to kind of address these things. We have, first of all, we encourage our deputies to be proactive, to be out and about, making traffic stops, contacting people, and taking enforcement action. As I previously mentioned, we have what we call a special enforcement team, and their job is to, hey, we're getting, you know, uptick in residential burglaries in this area. They're supposed to go there and do a lot of proactive patrol and hopefully run into the suspects. And then we have in the division, we have a directed enforcement team, and this is a sergeant, investigator, and five deputies, and their job is to target subjects on probation and parole and career criminals, and then they assist investigations with cases. And then lastly, on this subject, we will again ask the public for their help in this matter, you know, help prevent being a victim of property crime. Some things you can do, you know, always secure items out of plain sight in personal vehicles. This is a big thing, you know, a lot of our vehicle thefts and burglaries come from folks leaving their property in plain view, and it's an easy target for the suspects. Lock your vehicles at home. Big one, you know, we get comfortable, we live in a nice area, we leave things unlocked, and then we just make it easier for folks. So we don't want to do that. Never leaving your garage door open and unintended. And then if you go to the ocsheriff.gov website and you put in stay safe OC, there's a bunch of other tips that you can do for reducing property theft. So some good information on there. So as far as our calls for service, in March, we had 272 calls for service that we responded to. We had grand theft on the second on Santiago Boulevard, a catalytic converter. Again, this is still an ongoing problem in the Southern California region. On the 10,000 Block of Hastings, residential burglary vandalism on Santiago Boulevard, vehicle window smashed. We had a domestic violence incident on James Circle, another assault at the 18,000 Block of Taft. This was a school-related incident that our SRO handled. We did have an elder abuse case on Aberdeen Lane where the adult daughter was injuring the elderly parents. She was taken into custody. And then we had two narcotics incidents, one on Taft and Lemon, one on Villa Park Road and Lemon Street, and these were initiated activities by the deputies where they contacted folks in either a traffic stop or a pedestrian encounter and located narcotics. On the traffic side of the house, we responded to six traffic collisions. Two of them were minor traffic collisions with unknown injuries. And then we had three non-injury traffic collisions and one hit-and-run traffic accident, which was property damage. And then lastly, traffic citations. We issued a total 62 parking citations. Our patrol deputies assigned to Villa Park issued 32. We didn't have the motor sergeant at this time. He is back. He's been in town this month and has issued approximately a dozen citations. Apologize for the delay getting here with some transition and new sergeant. He had some training he had to do that we just couldn't make it work. So he's here, he's ready to go with spring and summer coming up. So let's see, total traffic citations, 94 citations. So yeah, it was a good month. I think we had, you know, good activity and-
Anybody have anything? I would like to personally thank you for your leadership and the proactive enforcement and the mentoring of these deputies. I think Sheriff Barnes should be very proud of the work that all of the deputies that are, that have been and that are working in Villa Park and that are serving our community. And in particular, this one incident, a door-to-door sales situation, and by the way, never buy anything from anybody who's selling something door-to-door. This is not the 1950s. The Fuller Brushman does not exist. These are people who are forced to work or are up to no good. So do not answer the door, do not buy from them. But these deputies went out of their way and frankly showed a high degree of leadership and proactive investigative skills and really saved some people from a horrible existence. They should be commended. I would personally like to give them mine, and I would hope that the council would also extend that in the form of a letter of commendation to each and every one of the individuals, whether they're deputies or CSOs involved in this. And I thank you for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Girl Scout cookies are probably pretty safe to buy.
I think you're going to know the Girl Scouts when they come to your door.
One comment. For several years, we have had a no soliciting ordinance here in Villa Park where unless a peddler has a license from our city office here, the city hall, they may not collect, go out and sell anything to our residents or do any soliciting. When they come to get their permit, if they do, they get a list of all the people that have registered in the no solicitation list, and they, it's a violation for them to contact them. I'm on the list. If somebody knocks on my door, I inform them right away that I'm on the no solicitation list. I ask for their, copy their permit and let them know that they're in violation. And if I don't see them walking down the street, I'll be calling the sheriff. And they typically walk away. If we all do that, that will reduce a lot of, I think, a lot of our crime because a lot of the, a lot of these people who are soliciting aren't really soliciting. They're looking for an opportunity to see if somebody's home or not, and there may be somebody else with them that it's going to run the backyard and ransack the house if nobody's home. So it's a good thing to make our community unwelcome to solicitors. And we have an ordinance. So do register with the no solicitation list at city hall.
Thank you. Very wise words. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Orange County Fire Authority.
Mayor Protem, council, good evening. Last month, since our last report, we've run 39 incidents in the city of Villa Park. There were none that were noteworthy. As far as around the county, as you know, here tonight, it's a little warm. Temperatures are rising throughout Southern California. Mostly, Faye would like to remind everybody to practice water safety. Unfortunately, over the weekend, we did have a drowning situation, but it does have a positive outcome with the child who's home with no issues. And that's because of the quick actions of the neighbors as well as the family. But that did not happen here in Villa Park. Children's and adults drown without a sound. Drowning consistently remains the leading cause of death for children under the age of five. Please follow these important steps when you're around the water. It's recommended that every, everyone, adults and children, always swim with a buddy regardless of their abilities as a swimmer. Swimming alone is very, very dangerous. There's no substitute for active supervision. Always be aware of your child's location, the whereabouts of all children when they're in the pool. Drowning can happen in bathtubs, ponds, pools, as little as two inches of standing water. Children can drown in seconds. Make sure you educate your kids about swimming safely, making sure they have swim lessons, and always have an adult or somebody who can swim around them in the water to supervise them. Drains and pools cause a lot of suctions. I know there's a lot of older pools out there, the newer pools don't, but always be cognizant of that, especially when your kids are swimming around the drains. Try to keep them away from that area. The drains will definitely trap them and adults underwater as well. Install and maintain proper fencing around the pool and spa to isolate the swimming area from the home as well as play areas. Use multiple barriers if you can with two fences. Try to store your patio furniture away from the fences so they can't use those to climb over. And if you do have covers that are safe, make sure you use the covers to cover your pool. And as far as bystanders, as important as parents, adults, bystanders, making sure you have first aid classes as well as CPR. That's what helped the child over the weekend have a positive outcome. Following these steps will help keep you and your family safe, so enjoy the best summer around by the pool. And not just the pool. We go to the beaches. Please make sure that you pay attention to the lifeguard signs, the lifeguard recommendations, and keeping an eye on your kids, especially if they're in the beach with the riptides and the waves and the games that children do play. So that's all I have.
Please.
Chief, I want to thank you and the entire Station 23 for hosting me back on the 26th of April, I mean, 26th of March. I had the, I had a great day there. They hosted me at the fire station. They started off with donuts, of course, first thing. They do eat well over there, I will tell you that. And there are some amazing chefs there too, because brunch was really amazing. But I tell you, I have a much greater appreciation for our first responders after going through that exercise with them and actually learning each piece of equipment, the protocols that they follow, the different things that each person on that unit has to do to keep the unit in shape and ready to go at all times to save one of us in the event that something happens. And it was just a great experience. I know now why you have the gym in there, because they made me put the entire outfit on, or the coat and the pants, the boots, the hat, the tank and everything else. And I reached over to pick up the fire hose, and it was all I could do to get over and get it and pick it up. Those guys are amazing, you know, men and women of our first responders are just, I can't tell you how much more respect and appreciation that I have for all of them for what they do. And please thank the entire station and the entire OCFA for hosting me that day. I appreciate it.
Oh, no problem. Thank you for coming out. And the donuts was just kind of a test in the beginning to see if firefighter, law enforcement, just to kind of fill you out.
I did suffer the jinx, so we had one call. They warned me first thing in the morning. We probably won't get any calls, and I think they had two after I left. So, but it was a great experience. Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
So if I can jump on that one. So I also was honored to do a ride-along, but it was with Station 21, and it was last Friday, the 22nd. And I want to say Chief Kuzma and Captain Hawkins were amazing and great hosts along with the entire crew. And although I didn't put on the whole outfit, they asked, and I was like, yeah, no, I'm good. But to Robbie's point, I learned a lot. And you see all this stuff, and you see you guys, and, you know, everyone thinks, oh, wow, that's cool, they're firemen or whatever. There's so much more going on, on every level, and everyone, you know, knows and checks and balances, and everyone has a job in what they do. And we actually were the reverse. We were constantly busy. And I learned that you don't order hot food when you're, because I treated the station to lunch as a thank you. And so we had gotten dressed up twice in full fire gear for a fire, twice. And right when we got there, they canceled it, and I was like, oh. It's like we went, got invited to a dance and didn't get to go. So we left, and then, okay, I think we can go to lunch. So we went, we ordered lunch, we were going to bring it back to the station to eat, and we got another call. And so two hours later-
You're lucky, you got lots of calls.
And what's funny is the guys, these big guys are all ordering salads. And I'm like, I'll show them. I ordered a big old hot pastrami sandwich. And so when we got back to the station, they were all enjoying their salads. And I was like, do you have a microwave anywhere? Because, and I said, well, now I know why you guys order salads, because it's never going to be warm. But thank you to you and to your entire staff, and hats off to them. It's an amazing, amazing group of men, and your entire staff was phenomenal. And I actually went on a couple of different calls and went to the hospital with them, and it was very exciting. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, anytime.
Yeah, one other thing I noticed, I used to work for American Medical Response to ambulance service, and I noticed some of the lifesaving equipment, I paid attention to that more so than anything else, the lifesaving equipment that you all have today is far more advanced than what we had, we had access to when I was at AMR. I mean, the one device that you put on a, on a person and give them-
Compressions?
Yeah, compressions. And you can, you can actually put it on them and leave it on them until you get to the hospital, and it's constantly giving them the compressions and keeping them alive. We didn't have that before. It was usually somebody on top doing the compressions and oxygen and things like that. It was just absolutely amazing. Thank you.
Sure. Just a quick note, something that Jim Rwayne and I have been talking about, the air conditioning system over there at Station 23. On hot days, I think it's important that people know that firefighters, they live there 24 hours a day, and some days, multiple days in a row. And that particular station is one of the older stations that serves Orange County and certainly are the only station that typically serves our community. And something that I noted a long time ago, something that I reported to the command staff a long time ago, was the fact that on hot days, because the HVAC ducting is external, it's hard to cool it off on a hot, hot day. Jim Rwayne said he would look into it. I have not heard back from him, so if you could please follow up with him, let him know that this is of very significant importance to this council, this community, obviously the firefighters who work there. And this is not frankly a complaint lodged by them. They don't complain. They just do their job, and they do it extremely well, something that I noticed. And I think it's important that it gets done sooner rather than later. All in all, phenomenal job. Please thank everybody over there for doing the great work that they do, and thank you for your leadership. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have council member meeting and attendance reports, starting off with mosquito and vector control.
Thank you. So we have a budget session tomorrow for the finance committee, so can't report on that. And then the operations committee, which I was made chair of, which was fun. Operations committee met on Thursday, April 14th. First order of business was to elect a new committee chair. Surprise, it was me. Staff then presented sterile insect technique update and program status report to the committee, and the following items were discussed. RAD source irradiation machine has been ordered and should be delivered sometime early in the summer. The agreement with the Greater Los Angeles County Vector Control District has been executed. Two members of the district's lab staff will be traveling to Lee County, Florida next week to train with their staff on the RAD source equipment as well as gain valuable information from them. Lee County is using the same equipment that is irradiating the male mosquitoes that we're going to be implementing with the sterile insect technique. So we're getting, we're there kind of in a collaboration, getting some good data. Staff is working on the design and space needs for the new insectary and has budgeted the necessary funds in the coming fiscal year 22, 23 budget. And lab staff is currently rearing 80s male mosquitoes in our existing insectary in order to become more familiar with the process of raising the mosquitoes from the egg stages. So eggs are obtained from a company in Kentucky called Mosquito Mate. And in order to optimize and maximize this program with the sterile insect technique and the radiation, we're kind of doing a couple different data gathering with how we ship the mosquitoes, the larvae, and, you know, how viable they are, and the conditions that they can survive under to make sure that we're able to optimize this program, which is going to be very costly. And then it is hoped to have a release area identified later this year to begin the outreach phase of the project. So before we start releasing all these massive irradiated mosquitoes, we're going to have to identify which area and then do some sort of public outreach-
Villa Park.
-so you don't see, you know, these massive swarms. And remember, males, males don't bite. So anytime a mosquito bites you, it's not a male. And then a 2023 release is planned, depending on everything coming together is planned. Huh? I missed it.
I thank you for that. Just please make sure Villa Park's on that list. And what you're saying to me is you're going to guarantee that I'm going to get less mosquito bites. That's- That's what we really want to know.
That's, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate reporting your attendance and all your work on that. All right. Next, we have Orange County Sanitation District, which I believe is Mayor Zimmerman, and he is not here, so we'll get that next time. Orange County Fire Authority, that is mine. If I can read my phone here. Eyes are getting older. On March 24th, Orange County Fire Authority met, and we discussed several items of significance, including but not limited to the mid-year budget adjustment, drowning prevention awareness proclamation, as Chief Hunter has mentioned, OCFA aircraft replacement review process. Basically, we have an aging fleet of helicopters, and we need to figure out what's next. We need to keep the birds up in the air, and we need to do so in a way that's cost-effective and it gets the best job done. So, that process is underway. We revised rules of procedure to add standing committees and went over the continued use of teleconferencing for meetings. One thing that I did want to point out with the mid-year budget adjustment, go to my next slide here. That's a picture of my dog. That's not going to work. Is that basically, we're in the positive. We have more revenues than we had expenditures, so things are going in a positive direction. We're making some significant inroads in replacing an aging fleet of equipment. So, we're going in the right direction. At the same time, we're making sure that we've got our retirement funds up to where they need to be, and our personnel hopefully are being paid what they need to be paid. There's obviously a lot of closed session matters that I can't discuss, but that's the long and the short of it. Next up, we have Orange County Library Advisory Board.
There was no meeting, but there's an executive committee meeting this Thursday, which I'll attend.
Thank you. Law enforcement advisory, no meeting. I'm sorry, I skipped Orange County Unified School District, City Schools Committee, that's, I guess, Mayor Zimmerman as well. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
So, we met March 23rd, and I don't know if you noticed, on Saturday, there were on several of the corners, there were some volunteers out there with some tables and information, and it was cleanup day in Villa Park. Earth Day was just last Friday. So, cleanup day encouraged residents to clean up, clean up their streets, their homes, their backyards, their garages. And they had the junk luggers present and a company that does shredding. So, at Villa Park Elementary, they could come and drop off their stuff. We'll get a report tomorrow. I know it was successful, but I don't have the exact numbers. And then, we went over that July 4th, there's something that's going to be planned. I'm sure we'll hear about more of that tomorrow. And then, also a movie, July 8th. So, we'll get more info tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you. Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting.
Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory Committee?
So, we met finally in person, and after a long hiatus, and kind of got the rundown on what COVID has done to the shelters, and didn't, didn't help, that's for sure. And their fiscal year is from June 30th, June to July, June of one year to July of the other. So, they serviced 308 individuals. Let's make sure my light's on. Twenty-seven of those exited to permanent housing. Unfortunately, 12% of the 27 returned back to the housing, to the shelter. The average length of stay for somebody at one of the shelters is 278 days. Nine of the 308 went to temporary housing. Right now, there's 134 individuals at the shelter. Their capacity is 142, which is down because they're still trying to make sure that they can accommodate in case there's more of a COVID outbreak. And they have ways of doing that by alternating the beds so that there's like head to toe. For temporary housing, the average length of stay is 158 days, and we're supposed to meet again in two months because we asked them to compile some data for some response times with some numbers from COVID, and if they were able to treat individuals there on site, or if they had to have them go to a hospital. So, they were going to get us that data.
Thank you. Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
It's me, too. We actually had a report from a nutritionist, and she went over, and I can provide the slides to city staff, the importance of foods in not only managing and controlling some of the neurological disorders that happen as you age, but also preventing it. So, some of the stuff that our parents always tell us about, you know, your legumes, your fish oils, leafy vegetables, vitamin E's and whatnot. So, it was really quite interesting. Again, we'll put the slides to the city staff, and they can go through and read it. And it basically lays out what foods you should eat to help prevent and delay some of the things like Parkinson's and Alzheimer's and whatnot. Almonds are a big thing, a lot of almonds. So, it was interesting, learned a lot.
Good enough. Thank you. All right. Any questions? If not, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comments. At this time, we will review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, are there any comment cards?
Yes, we do. First is Dave Hanson.
Dave, please step forward. Give us your full name and address, please, or street at least.
My name is Dave Hanson. I live at 1-8, what is my address? 17841 Serrano Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I look forward to hearing more about items being accomplished with the Smith Basin. So, whatever energy can be put towards that, I'd love to help in any way that I can. I'll grab a shovel. I'll do whatever we need. I'm also really proud of Yorba Linda, where we, Liz and I lived, my wife Liz is with us for 21 years prior to coming to Yorba Linda for our single-story home. I am proud of you, Todd, for being part of a team that we're able to put together. I would consider it a big win. I know there's a little bit different area availability between, but this is what we have here, and we need to figure it out, and I look forward to more happening there. I also want to give a thumbs up for Kathy Tracy being able to get on the list of streets to be paved at Churchill and Squires. I went over there and I visited that street, and yeah, it was hammered. So, if we have other streets in town like that, then we have a lot to do. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Karen McMahon.
Welcome, Karen.
Hello. I'm on Churchill, I'm Team Churchill. I'm Karen McMahon. I live at 1-8382 Churchill Lane. And surprise, I'm not here for the street tonight, but on Jacquetal, on the corner, there's a beautiful house that's been totally redone, lemon and Jacquetal. And it has come to my attention that it is on Airbnb and VRBO, short-term rental. They've already had an 18-year-old party there. I'm highly concerned. I don't want that going on. And I've gone on there, on the websites, and on VRBO, I believe it's, you can, you can rent that place for weddings, parties. I mean, that's what it's advertised as. And I don't know what the protocol is, what we can do, but I'm really concerned, and the neighbors are all concerned. I don't want that in my neighborhood at all. I want to be able to go out and walk and at any time of the night, not be afraid of what's coming in. I don't want to have teenage parties. You know, it's concerning, so.
We understand. We share your concerns. Todd, do you want to briefly address this?
So, for anybody here or listening at home, short-term rentals are illegal in the city of Villa Park within our municipal code. Also, even advertising for short-term rentals are separately also illegal. So, anybody who is operating or is thinking about operating in the future such a facility, they should know that it is illegal, and staff is aware of it and is going to be taking action.
Okay, so you don't need the address, because I have it right here.
I'm fairly certain I know exactly what else you're talking about.
All right.
We are taking, we are taking significant actions.
Thank you.
Yes.
That thrills me. Okay.
Thank you. Steve, anyone else?
No, we did receive a written comment that he asked to be read into the thing from Mr. Sergio Stone.
Please.
Dear Mr. Mayor, it is uplifting to see Villa Park celebrating Earth Day and encouraging residents to clean the city and plant some greenery while at the same time improving the city landscaping with projects such as New Knolls Park. On the other hand, it is disconcerting that the city has not committed itself to eliminate the enormous pollution produced daily from eight to five by numerous gasoline-powered, oil-powered engines from leaf blowers and other similar gardeners, tools by enacting a new ordinance that prohibits their use inside the city limits. It is amply demonstrated that besides the intolerable noise pollution, the air pollution they produce, smoke, carbon monoxide, nitrous oxides, carcinogenic hydrocarbons is secondary to almost no other engine and should be eliminated from enlightened communities conscious of the harm to the environment. Given all these considerations, I urge you and the council take up this cause without delay. Sergio Stone, who resides on State Drive in Villa Park.
Thank you. If there's nothing further as far as, we have one more.
Yeah, Pat Buttriss?
Pat, welcome. Thank you.
No, thank you for taking me at the last minute. I appreciate it. All I wanted to do was to invite you and the wonderful citizens of Villa Park to make sure they come out for the May parade, which is a week from this Saturday, this coming Saturday. It's on May 7th. It's only a mile long. It's on East Chapman Avenue going into the Plaza area, and it's going to be a lot of fun. They've got like 70 entrants. I'm just amazed at how many people, and people are so excited about it. So, I hope that you will accept this as an invitation to all of Villa Park to also participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Okay. Since we have nothing further, we will now move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is to review, to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Steve, would you please give the staff report?
Thank you. This is the monthly item we place on the agenda to allow us to have expeditious meetings, so we'd, staff would recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any public comment, I doubt it, but I'd say it for the record, since I'm seeing and hearing none. Let's go ahead and take a vote on this. We up and running on these?
Yes. There we go. It passes 4-0.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have the introduction of ordinance 2022-625 pertaining to the regulation of unmanned aircraft systems, drones, et cetera. I will now open the hearing. Steve, would you please give the staff report?
Thank you. I'll defer a lot of it to the city attorney. But what basically this is, is the drone ordinance, if you will, addresses the drones that are so prevalent in our communities today. This is a response to a request by both Mayor Protem Rosini and Councilman Colacott to put it on the agenda. This would constitute the first reading of said ordinance. Should this be approved by the council, it would, the second reading would be next month, and the ordinance would be enacted 30 days thereafter. It's important to note, if the council decides to change anything, it would just start the process. We'd have the first reading in May, and we'd just start over at that time. But I'll defer to the specifics of the ordinance. I'll lead to our city attorney. So, a large portion of this is governed by federal law by the FAA. This ordinance encapsulates as much local control as is allowable under that federal framework. A couple of highlights as outlined in the staff report, the drone has to take off where you can see it. We have a lot of problems with people sending droves over hills, and they crash into things. That's bad. You can't be within 500 feet of an emergency response, so sometimes if there's an incident, particularly a fire incident, they'll send up drones, and they get in the way, and they're nuisances, so you can't do that. Drones shall not take off or land on private property without the consent of the property owner. I mean, you are the king of your own castle, king or queen. You don't want a drone flying out your window. That's illegal. And then, you can't operate them in a reckless manner. That's the general framework of what we're doing here. Like I said, it's pretty much as far as we can go on the local level in this regulation. And with that, I would recommend adoption. I'm here if you have any questions.
I understand there may be some questions related to this. I put together some brief supporting information in about five minutes and sent it off to everybody today. What gives me particular concern is the wildland fire component and interference with aircraft operations. When these drones are in the air and they're not related to an emergency response, any response from emergency responders, first responders in the air can't happen. If drones are in the air, they're on the ground. That's a huge issue. There's obviously always a privacy component that goes with this, too, and I don't want to get in the way of any hobbyist fund. That's not my goal. That's not my concern. It's frankly just to give our sheriffs a tool in their proverbial tool bag, one which they will seldomly, if ever, pull out. But on the rare situation where somebody is a knucklehead, for lack of a more appropriate word, they can pull that out, because nobody from the FAA is going to come out to Villa Park and give Mr. Knucklehead a citation or arrest them. It's going to be up to the sheriff. And that's, I think it's critically important that we have something on the books to give them that capability. Otherwise, the sheriff's deputy's going to look up in the air, look at Mr. Knucklehead and go, have fun, and that's going to be that. Obviously, the fire service may want to chime in on this. I don't want to put you on the spot, chief, but I think you've heard of situations where these drones have gotten in the way of firefighting operations, and we're surrounded by foothills. We've had fires very close to our city, and we don't want to have something that gets in the way of that response. Do you have anything to add on that, chief? Thank you. And this is not something where we're reinventing the wheel. We're on the bleeding edge of legislation or policymaking here. The city of Yorba Linda, I personally have contacted city officials over there. I know, Todd, you work with them, and this is patterned after what they do. So, please understand that this is not in any way, shape, or form trying to get in the way of a hobbyist's recreational enjoyment. It's just to keep the knucklehead from interfering with what they should, and also trying to keep the privacy concerns of our residents and the children in the schools guarded at all times. That's all I have. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, and just to that point, I mean, yeah, I wrote this for Yorba Linda a year and a half ago, and then Villa Park said, oh, we need one. I'm like, yeah.
So, I was going to move it.
Oh, couple of questions. Is the federal statute or the FAA, do they mandate what's taking place over schools? Because I have a little concern about drones being flown over schools and also over parks. And we're about ready to open a new park here in Villa Park. We have several schools here. And is there anything in the federal statute that prohibits operation over a school zone?
The FAA regs generally deal with the elevation up in the air. I think it's over 500 feet. They have more complete jurisdiction. If a school district doesn't allow it, that would be private property without allowance, which would be barred by this ordinance. And the same for the city. The city can disallow it on city property if it so wishes. I mean, I have seen in other cities, people go out and fly them in parks, and the cities don't have problems with that.
Well, I read some of the information that you'd sent out, and one of the concerns were parents with, you know, drones flying over schools and watching the kids in the schoolyards and things like that, so.
My understanding is school districts don't allow it. That's my understanding.
And the other thing, too, was I noticed that we said couldn't take off within 500 feet? What if I step back a half a mile and take off, and that's still over the emergency area that he's working?
You can't take off for... You can't take off or be within five hundred feet, and you can't be far enough away where you can't physically see the drone, so that's intended to be covered.
Just want to make sure it's covered, because it's, the way I interpreted it was, you know, within five hundred feet, you couldn't launch it?
You can't do that, and you can't be within five hundred feet in any capacity.
Okay.
You know, frankly, I think the cops shoot them out of the air, don't you guys? If they're over in a scene?
Uh, no.
I swear, somebody said, "If there's a drone at my site, I'm going to shoot it."
No.
All right.
Interesting target practice. Do we have any public comment on this matter?
No comments received.
Seeing none, hearing none, hearing no further discussion. We have a motion and a second here, can you please take the vote, roll?
Passes four zero, so that would be the first reading, the second reading will be May twenty, whatever the next first meeting in May it'll be.
Understood.
May twenty-fourth.
Understood, and thank you. On the next item, which is item four of our public hearings, I'm actually going to have to recuse myself, because I live within one thousand feet of the residents in question, and based upon discussions with our city attorney and city manager, the most senior member of the council, who is not either the mayor or the mayor pro tem, since the mayor and the mayor pro tem will not be here, will conduct the affairs of the meeting, and that will be council member Colacott, I'm going to go ahead and step out now.
Okay, one of the privileges of age, I guess. Okay, staff, would you please give us your report?
Sure. Justin?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, mayor, oh, I guess not mayor, just members of the city council. Before you is variance twenty twenty-two dash oh two, the application involves one nine four six one Mesa Drive, which is currently improved with a two-story residence on a twenty thousand six hundred and forty-nine square foot lot located in the E4 zoning district. The property owner is Sam Olson of Pacific Legacy Real Estate. The focus of the application is a four hundred and fifty-four square foot attached garage addition. The ADU and sixty-five square foot addition are not in scope of the variance and will be processed administratively by staff. The garage will have enough space for two vehicles and will measure twenty feet eight inches in width and twenty-one feet ten inches in length. With that said, I'll now present variance twenty twenty-two dash oh two. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, the minimum front yard building setback for houses and attached garages in the E4 zoning district is thirty feet, and the property owner is requesting approval to reduce the minimum front yard building setback from thirty feet to twenty-one feet two inches, a deviation of eight feet ten inches. There are several reasons why the property owner is requesting a reduction in the minimum front yard building setback. First, Mesa Drive used to be a throughway to Saro Villa. As a result of the rerouting of the street, the property now yields a fifteen foot three inch dedication to the public right-of-way, which is much larger than other properties in the vicinity and in the E4 zone. Additionally, the existing single-family dwelling is legal non-conforming and sits over one foot closer to the front property line than allowed by the current setbacks. The other reason for the variance is a result of the unusual lot shape and the difficult topography and contours. With the current proposed addition, the garage would still maintain a safe distance from the street at over forty-seven feet ten inches from the flow line, a distance which is typical for other properties in the E4 zone. The large front yard setback would also alleviate any line-of-sight concerns for passing vehicles. Absent the variance, it would be difficult to improve the property with the garage addition given the current property constraints. Generally, variances are considered for approval when the property in question possesses inherent physical characteristics and constraints, such as an irregular lot shape and difficult topography or easements. In the case of this property, it is irregularly shaped, it possesses difficult topography, and it yields a large public right-of-way, which makes property improvements difficult. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, public hearing notices for this variance request were also mailed and posted at least ten calendar days prior to this public hearing. The public hearing notice was also published in a local newspaper. To date, staff has received a supplemental letter of justification and two letters of support from neighbors, and I also just received a letter of opposition by email before the meeting, and I can read any of those out now or later if the council would like.
Would anybody like to hear the?
I'd like to hear the opposition.
We'd like to hear the opposition letter, please.
Okay, pull up the email. Okay, so the email, the letter of opposition reads as follows. Hello and greetings, my concern regarding variance twenty twenty-two dash oh two for address one nine four one one Mesa Drive. The property has already recently been divided into, and now they want a variance to be able to squeeze a building onto a smaller lot. They already had a bigger lot to begin with, and they sold off half of it. Crowding structures on the properties is not what Villa Park is about. It doesn't say exactly where they want to put this garage and where they are talking about doing the variance. But the whole horse arena that was in the back of the house has just been sold off, and they couldn't put as much as a garage as they wanted to do there without asking for any kind of variance. Let's keep Villa Park looking good and not crowded. I ask that, I ask about the council reexamines its request for the variance. A second concern I have about the same address is that they have a pool with no fencing around it and construction going on with absolutely no fencing, and people and children can walk right into the property and fall into the pool. It is an attractive nuisance that's just waiting for tragedy, a tragedy to happen, and I hope it doesn't.
Thank you.
The address of the opposition letter?
Yeah. The address is...
It's just the city, Mesa Drive, it does not give the address.
I don't see if he put the address, I see one nine four one one Mesa Drive listed, so it's from Mr. Larry Hack, so I believe that's his address, one nine four one one, but I can't confirm that for sure. So with that being said, after careful review of the zoning code, the property, and with utmost consideration to the neighborhood and the city, the planning department recommends that council approves variance twenty twenty-two dash oh two for the new garage addition. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that anyone may have at this time.
Council, have any questions?
Did he say that this property had been split and there were multiple dwellings in the back?
Yes, can you, did you hear the question?
Yeah, so there was a, this, I believe happened before I worked here, but there was a lot, there was a lot split that took place, and it was sold off.
I could respond to that, counsel.
Okay.
The property on the backside...
Can you come to the podium, please?
Ray's coming.
Oh, Ray, I'm sorry.
There's a property that's on the opposite side of this, this house, that involved, it involved a lot line adjustment, and the lot line adjustment was to, basically, it's an odd-shaped lot to start off with, and it's narrow, and the property owner at the time requested a lot line adjustment so that it would meet all of the development standards, including buildings, building side yard setbacks. So that's, that's the, I guess, the lot split that they were, that this gentleman is talking about. It wasn't a lot split, it was a lot line adjustment.
Could you explain the difference?
Yeah, the lot line adjustment is, it involves a parcel map, whenever you subdivide a piece of property, that's four or less parcels. This one was, these lots were already legally subdivided, and the property owner at the time just wanted to move an existing lot line between these two properties. So there wasn't any new parcels that were created, it was just a lot line, an existing lot line that was being adjusted to accommodate a setback.
Okay. The current lot is in the E4 zone, is it, and the E4 zone requires a twenty thousand square foot or larger lot, is that correct, to be conforming?
Yes, when the lot line adjustment was being applied for, one of the things that we look at is to make sure that the lot line adjustment maintained the minimum twenty thousand square feet for both lots that were involved.
And I see from the plan that was provided that the lot size is twenty thousand six hundred and forty-nine, so this is a conforming lot, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Do you have a public speaker as well?
Okay, public comments?
Yes, Mr. Sam Olson.
Thanks for listening to me, I live at one eight nine two two Santiago Boulevard in Villa Park. I think the letter was probably misinformed because, like he said, they didn't split the lot, there was already a lot there. And the lot adjustment was in the back of the property, it wasn't out on the front of the property, it was in the back portion of the property where they split the lot. And he mentioned that there's no fence around the pool, and there is a fence all the way around the pool, that has a fence completely around the pool, so it's just, I think they didn't have all the information.
Are you planning on putting up a construction fence?
Yes, we will when we start building the garage.
Because I was there yesterday, and I walked right into the house.
Yeah, we will put a construction fence there when we start building the garage. We didn't, we didn't know there was even an issue when we originally submitted the plans until the city engineer brought it up to us, that there was an issue, because they'd moved the road years ago, and they left this huge, this huge, what do you call it, right-of-way in front of the house. So when you look at the house, it looks normal, there's nothing abnormal about it, and when they, when we build the garage, it will still be the same distance as every house in Villa Park, it'll still be, because in Villa Park, for the code, you want seven feet usually for the right-of-way, and then thirty feet setback, and this will be thirty-seven feet, a little bit more than thirty-seven feet from the street. So it won't be any closer to the street than any other house in Villa Park. And the reason they wanted the garage, because the house is on a hill, and so the garage before is down underneath the house, and you had to go upstairs to get up to your garage, and we want the garage to be on the same level as the rest of the house, so you can go directly into the, into the house, so that's, that's the reasoning for it. And on the side yard setback, there's no variance, it's just the front that we're talking about from the curb, yeah.
No, I was just concerned, because you all had done demo work there, and, you know...
We've gotten permission for all that.
No, 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 I'm just saying, construction fence.
Safety-wise.
I'm sorry?
Safety-wise.
Yeah, safety-wise.
We'll do it, I'm glad to do that. You know, we kind of got held up a little bit because of the garage, and so, but we'll do that, we always put a construction fence up when we do it, so I apologize if that's not there.
Uh, question?
What's your plan with the house?
The house is going to be mostly a one-story house.
I mean, what's your, what's your plan, are you flipping it?
Oh, we're going to sell it, we're going to sell it, yeah.
Okay, you're not, you're not planning any short-term rentals, right?
No, no short-term rentals, I understand the laws for Villa Park.
Perfect.
We're going to fix it, and it's going to be a beautiful home, a lot nicer than it's now, so it's going to...
Senior work.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be a beautiful home when it's done, and there aren't any other structures on the, and they said something about other structures, but there's no other structures on the property. There is going to be an ADU, but it's underneath the house, it's within the same confines of the house.
I would recommend or suggest that you reach out to the person that had the opposition, just for clarification.
I'd be glad to do that, you know, find out where he lives. I'm a nice guy, I get along well with people, I think, once I explain it to him. I don't think he completely understood what was happening, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I'd be pleased to see that you're going to be adding an ADU, so that'll give us another notch for getting to our arena number, so.
It'll be very nice, you know, we'll do a really nice job of the house, so. Do you have any other questions for me?
No, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Did we do public comment? Yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, second.
Okay, please vote.
You ready?
Just, can you just click, Vince has just clicked, abstain, yeah. There you go, passes three zero.
Thank you.
Let me grab.
Yes.
Right, on to item five of public hearings, our last hearing is variance number two zero two two dash zero three at one zero nine one two Vita Drive. I will now open the hearing, staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, Justin, why don't you go ahead in this one, too?
Okay. Before you is variance number twenty twenty-two dash oh three, the application involves one oh nine one two Vita Drive, which is currently improved with a one-story residence with an attached garage on a twenty-two thousand two hundred and five square foot lot located in the E4 zoning district. The property owner is the William B. Henshaw Trust. The focus of the application is a four hundred and sixty-eight square foot attached ADU and a new six hundred and twenty-nine square foot one-car garage and storage room addition. There's a total of one thousand ninety-seven square feet in scope of the variance. With that said, I'll now present variance twenty twenty-two dash oh three. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, the minimum front yard building setback in the E4 zone is thirty feet, while the minimum side yard building setback is ten percent of the average lot width, or thirteen feet three inches for the subject property. And the property owner is requesting approval to reduce the minimum front yard building setback from thirty feet to twenty-one feet two inches, a deviation of eight feet ten inches, and the side yard building setback from thirteen feet three inches to seven feet, a deviation of six feet three inches. There are several reasons for the variance request. First, unlike other properties in the vicinity, the subject property is located on an unusually shaped lot, which narrows towards the unusual orientation, which is crooked in relation to the property lines. This further complicates any potential improvements on the property. As a result of the dwelling's unusual orientation, the existing house is also legal non-conforming and sits approximately seven feet from the north side yard property line. Absent the variance, it would be difficult to improve the property with the proposed additions, given the current property constraints. And generally, variances are considered for approval when the property in question possesses inherent physical characteristics and constraints, such as an irregular lot shape, difficult topography or easements. And in the case of this property, the lot is irregularly shaped, and the house has an unusual orientation, which makes improvements difficult. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, public hearing notices for this variance request were mailed and posted at least ten calendar days prior to this public hearing. The public hearing notice was also published in a local newspaper. To date, city staff received a supplemental letter of justification and three letters of support from neighbors, and we have not received any letters or emails of opposition. I can read those now or later if you would like. Finally, after careful review of the zoning code, the property, and with utmost consideration to the neighborhood and the city, the planning department recommends that the council approves variance twenty twenty-two dash oh three for the ADU, the garage, and storage room additions. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that anyone may have about the variance.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
What is the proposed setback from the, from the proposed addition to the flow line of the street?
Give me a moment here.
Just for the record, too, we also have a...
Thank you.
I would have to look at the easements, or look at the public right-of-way dedication. I do know, though, that it is less than thirty feet, which is the normal front yard setback requirement.
Okay, to the flow line, from the house to the flow line?
Correct, I'd have to look at the dedication from the flow line to the property line, I don't have that here in the plans.
Ray, do you have anything to add? Looks like you're looking at...
Trying to look at, looking at the tidy, the question is, the measurement from the flow line to the proposed addition? Trying to look in there, look, looking at the, the tidy, the question is the measurement from the flow line to the proposed addition to the proposed structure.
So a rule of thumb is usually it's 7 feet from flow line to where the property line is. So if you add 21 to it, 21 six, it would be about, it would be less than 30 as Justin mentioned.
It'd be close to 30.
It'd be closer to 30, yes.
Yeah, inches.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, 21 feet 6 inches is what the proposed, uh, setback is for this addition.
Okay, with this addition, would there be any, um, problems with utilities or anything else that may be in the ease, within the easement?
I don't believe so.
The structure is not going to be built on the easement. It's gonna be without, outside of the easement, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything further?
No.
Anything? Public?
Mr. Bennett?
I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any.
I have none. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Check off on that ADU.
Another one.
Yep.
Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please take the vote.
Passes four zero.
Thank you. Now onto the consent calendar, items six through 10. Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items from number six through 10 that you would like to remove from the consent calendar for discussion? Any member of the public want to, uh, poll any items?
No, we've received nothing.
Hearing none, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the balance?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please take the vote.
Passes by a four zero vote.
Thank you. On to new business. Item number 11. Our first item of new business is the approval of the 2022-2023 OC Animal Care Notice of Intent. Steve, would you please read the staff report?
Thank you. Uh, in 2016, the city of Villa Park signed with a number of other cities, with the county, to a 10-year agreement for provision of animal care services and the development of an animal shelter. Uh, the 10-year agreement requires that the county issue an annual notice of intent, which is basically, uh, includes a specification of costs and services for each of the cities. Uh, this is identical to previous years. Uh, the contract amount, uh, is, um, 21,977, which is 5,700, uh, or 5,800, under the current estimate. This is just an estimate we use for budgetary purposes, but basically it, it provides us a contract amount, uh, that we can use for contracts with the county. Um, the shelter part of the agreement, the city pays on a regular basis about $5,400 and our balance on that is about 21,900 on that we pay on an annual basis. So, uh, with that, we would rec, we've received very good services, have had no complaints in general about, uh, animal care except for coyotes, uh, which animal care does not specifically address, while fishing game does that as well. Uh, but anyway, long story short, we believe that this is, uh, worth and recommended, uh, approval.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff? Any member of the public have any concerns on this? Seeing none, hearing none. Do I have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Passes four zero.
Thank you. Item 13. Our next item of new business is the NV5 engineering, excuse me.
No, that's, we're on-
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. I skipped. Our next item of new business is the city, all HVAC repair. Yes, it is important for everybody that works here. Steve, would you please read the staff report?
Thank you. In late March of this year, we had, uh, two units that support HVAC, HVAC units that support heating and air conditioning for our city hall office area and this council chambers. As you guys have experienced, that, um, unfortunately is, is, they needed to be repaired. One of them is 22 years old, the other is 11 years old. Uh, so we went out to bid to see what, first of all, what the problem was, and they identified it. It's a replacement needed. So we, uh, solicited bids. We received three bids. Uh, the lowest bid was Empire, who initially came in at 30,000, and then we talked to them about the, uh, heat pump that we would also need, and they said it would be another 1,500. So their revised total estimate was 32,000, which is still the low bid by approximately $4,000. Since the units have failed, we've had no heating, uh, in the city hall, as Mitch made it very pleasant. And the, we've used portable fans in the office. So in light of this, because of the long delays required to get these types of units, they have to schedule cranes. They have to do a whole process. This is not just a, get a repair guy out to fix them and put a new unit in like you're at residential. These are big, uh, 20-ton units that are, you know, very heavy, et cetera. So based on some of the extreme heat and the timeframes to involve, we were, uh, we went ahead, I went ahead and talked to the city attorney, and he and I both agreed on an emergency basis, we could go ahead and let a contract come back to the council for ratification. This is an essential service. Uh, we can't operate without, uh, heating and air conditioning, and a number of meetings have had to been rescheduled out of the year because of heat during the, uh, the bad times. Anyway, so with a long story short, we're asking for, uh, up, the city council to ratify action where I've taken agreement. Uh, I've, amount of 32,000 005 with Empire to replace the units. Um, and it is, takes, it's taken about three weeks. The units are not in stock. They have to go get them. Uh, long story, uh, again, long story short, we'll have them hopefully next Wednesday and reinstalled. So our goal was to get it by this week, but again, we're sort of at the mercy of these products being delivered, uh, as any technical devices you're finding now are difficult to come by. Uh, but anyway, that's, in just in the interest of making city hall usable as we enter into the summer months and the heat, uh, we, I went ahead and did that, and I would ask for your ratification of the item.
Council members, any questions of staff, any concerns? Seeing none, hearing none. We have one member of the public still here. Any questions or comments on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second. Please vote.
Passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 has been continued.
Thank you.
So we could have all five members of the council take action.
Thank you. Item 14. Our last item of new business is the Ward of Sanitary Sewer Evaluation and Sewer Master Plan Update Project. Steve, please give the staff report.
Thank you. In February of this year, the city council authorized us to release an RFP for sanitary sewer evaluation and sewer master plan update, which we believe is essential to moving forward and, uh, making sure that we have adequate sewer systems, especially with the development of, uh, as, uh, Councilman Colacott, we need to make sure that our systems and, and our sewer system can handle the, uh, additional ADUs and any other types of activities that may occur relative to lot splits or whatnot. So we went out to bid. Um, we have worked, um, and we did a wide circulation of the bid. That was out there from February 22nd. Uh, and they had till March 28th, so a little over a month, like five weeks to respond. And we've received one responsive bid from NV5, uh, and that bid was amount of 134,514. Uh, it's my belief that if we were to go out and begin, we would not-
Excuse me, I think I need to recuse myself.
Oh. Okay, good. So with that, I'm sorry, uh, with that, uh, we received a bid for 134,000. There were no other bids. We received no other inquiries either. Nobody was, and we did a wide circulation on the bidding over a five-week period. Um, we believe that NV5 is a comprehensive nature and understands it. Uh, we do contract with them, so in looking at the bids, it went through me as opposed to, through our city engineer who has a contract employee of NV5. So I worked through the process, uh, and we are, uh, basically asking them to, uh, recommending approval of the contract for 134,514. Um, and again, the contract would start July 1st and get us through June 30th of next year. Uh, we have, as you recall in the budget process, we have about 1,008,000 that we, sewer assessment each year. But to make sure that we're putting our money in the right places and doing the right types of repairs and things, we believe this is an essential function. So the option in my mind is either go ahead with this project or, uh, we don't go ahead with the project, meaning that we cancel out on the, on the sewer, uh, project. I believe it's an important type of thing, and I don't believe there are gonna be other alternate bidders out there. So our recommendation to move forward at this time.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions?
Well, I, I have a concern. Steve, I, I had spoke to you about it earlier, about, uh, you know, item 13 being, being moved and, um, can you kind of elaborate that NV5?
Yeah, this, NV5 has, is over 3,000 employees. This is a specialized function that would be entailed and would not be involved any of our, our people would be involved just showing the maps of where our systems are and those types of thing. They have a separate project team and, and based on, uh, the other issue that we have relative to the contracts with, uh, NV5 for engineering, in the event that that were somehow altered, uh, would they still be willing to go ahead on this project? This is a project-specific contract that they're willing to move forward on. We have very specific, uh, specifications, if you will, specific specifications is redundant. But basically, we have a very specific work criteria and work for, uh, that there, and they indicated that they would be willing to work forward on this, regardless of anything that might alter, change, or not change with the existing engineering contract. So from that, I think that's what you were-
That was exactly it, yes, thank you.
So that, and it would not be the same team. It's a separate team that is, uh, well-versed in working specifically with sewers as their professional experience.
Thank you. That's it.
Councilman Colacott recused himself. May I ask why?
Because he is a, he's indicated to us that he is a, uh, employee of subsidiary, uh, business that works, that does business or consultant that does work for NV5 under contract. So he believed there was a con, uh, been discussing that with, uh, the city attorney.
Okay, but he doesn't directly work for NV5, just a subsidiary?
He's a subsidiary consultant, as I understand.
And he's consultant, okay.
As I understand.
All right. I, I have some questions. Did you have any further, Robbie? I'm sorry. So this went out to bid. We had one company respond, one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we took all the normal approach to it, um, when we did the RFP.
Yes.
And is it your experience in working in the city and perhaps with your discussions from prior city managers and city councils that we've had issues with our sanitary sewer system within Villa Park?
We, we do regularly. There's capacity issues and we, that's one of the points here is trying to figure out where we have capacity and where we don't have capacity, because if we're doing some additional construction, much of these utilities were done years and years ago before streets were paved, et cetera. Now, we go back and, and deal with them all, but you recall in 2007, eight, they, they, there was a sewer assessment fee that was established onto everyone's property tax for this very specific purpose to deal with the sewers and potential problems there, uh, cause of the aging infrastructure. So this is essential, but we need to target that area. I mean, we don't have unlimited pot of money. We have a specific, and we want to focus on those that are problematic. We also wanna, what this would entail, one of the elements it would entail is photographing every line that we have, so we know exactly. We had a phone call this week of somebody disputing whether it was a lateral or a a main line that was sewer that was, a lateral would be the responsibility of the property owner. We would have the main line response. So he is having discussions with our engineers as we speak about where this is, and we, we're able to pull out very old, but he's, his concern is he has, he wants to see some new film of it, what it would look like. So we would have to go out and do that. That's one of the, the specifications here. And the other issue is, um, we need to know because much of this, it's my understanding, I don't know for a fact, but much of our sewer system is probably at or near capacity. And to the extent that we are gonna build ADUs or build other things on it, we need to know that because one of, as you're aware, one of the, uh, components that we can address relative to lot splits, et cetera, is we can require that anybody building them has to address those capacity issues, however that may be.
Yeah, I share some of those concerns and, and that's my understanding of, of the history and, uh, I certainly welcome any other comments on this, especially with, uh, the increased size of, of the homes that we've seen, the investment in the community by, um, homeowners and multimillion-dollar homes and all the ADUs. I, I'm concerned about our, our utilities, um, having quite a strain on them, whether it's, um, sewer or water. Water in particular, uh, is another concern of mine, uh, but certainly we don't want sewage backing up in houses. And then obviously the other utilities, um, electrical and phone, what have you. Robbie, did you have anything further?
Yeah, I was, I, maybe your memory is, is good or better than mine, but I thought we did the, um, cameras in the sewers when I first joined on council and went through this whole process of assessing things.
The last, we, the last, it was like a third of the city they did was like in 2016. And, um, you know, that was the last official study that was done, and that was again for only a third of the city at the time. So this is sort of a comprehensive, and there's been a lot of construction and whatnot.
And this is the entire-
So the last comprehensive study was 2013.
And this is the entire city?
This is the entire city.
Anything further? Sir? Nothing from the public and no further discussion on the council. I would entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. Please vote.
Could you, somebody click?
Abstain on his.
We won't tell her that you threw. We won't tell him that you threw-
Double vote.
We don't want, that's, that's a whole other story. That passes three zero.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, everybody.
I almost throw this one this time. I accidentally threw yours.
You wanna get?
All right. Item 15, city manager report.
Why don't we wait for a second if you can?
Oh, yeah, I apologize. Trying to start without Bob. There he is. Hey, Todd?
Todd's wandering the hallways.
That way, and he went that way.
We, we can probably go ahead here. This is the monthly report that I have.
What are you looking for?
Uh, a couple of issues here. We continue to work on the budget and we'll be coming back, uh, May 16th with our second budget hearing, uh, workshop. Thank you again for the participation last month. It was very impressive. I, I would like to, just as a, real quick, uh, we did receive a, our property taxes went up higher than we thought, so we have some good news in our budget, but we have some, you know, bad news. We'll go through it all later. Uh, the Knowles Park, we provide, continue to provide a monthly report. We have done some saw cutting there and we're now waiting for the pictures, that, the, the emblems of the grape, of the fruit, ba, whatever you call them, the fruit, uh, labels to be, uh, delivered, and we'll be installing those. The other thing is we're waiting on a couple of the benches. Again, that's a problem because of getting just delivery on stuff right now. Uh, but we are publishing a monthly, uh, I mean, a weekly update of where we are with that. If anyone has any questions about the Villa Park Knowles, please give us a call. We can, we can share that thing. Um, and with that, I, oh, the other thing I did mention is that we, um, we, we have a change in our, our finance director is leaving us at the end of this, um, budget season. I think he's looking, well, I, I'm talking into a little longer, but he's talking a little shorter. Uh, he's ready to start his, so Jim Gorzoe will be leaving, uh, us, and I think I've announced that at the budget hearings, but just for general recognition. So, uh, if you see him in the next month or two, make sure you stop by and say hello because he'll be gone after that. He's gonna keep a fairly low profile and get some things done before he leaves. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, hearing none. Move forward. Thank you. Uh, individual council member information items. Uh, let's go ahead and start from my right.
I have a couple of things. One, uh, once again, thank you, sir, for, for, you know, hosting me at the, at the fire station. I hate, keep saying that over and over, but it was just a thrill for me. The other thing is I'm attending SCAG event, uh, next week. Uh, I don't know if you all read the agenda, had the opportunity to read the agenda and, and look at some of the things that we'll be voting on. There's not really anything to do with policy or anything like that, but certainly if there's something I need to be cognizant of, I'd appreciate it if you all would, uh, share your information with me so that, uh, I'm voting and doing what, you know, what's best for Villa Park.
Thank you. Will do. Madam?
Just want to say thank you again for my ride along. It was eye-opening and again, just affirms the heroes that, um, all the firemen and staff are, so thank you for that. And then I want to give a shout out to Villa Park High School Baseball, who is now a D1 program. And before the game this evening, um, they were 24 and 2. They lost to Foothill 24 and 3, now their record. But, um, they were moved up in the ranks to be, uh, number one in the state and then number one for CIF. And for the first time, so the Boris Classic is a huge, very prestigious tournament. There's two very prestigious high school tournaments in the nation. One is in North Carolina and one is in California, and, um, there was a hiatus for two years. Uh, and so the Boris Classic, which was just held last week, uh, sees the top 32 teams in Southern California and, uh, are all over California and Villa-